Well, good evening. I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Newport News School Board for Tuesday, June the 21st, 2022. On behalf of the members of the school board and the superintendent, I welcome each of you present and watching. A quorum is present tonight to transact the business of the school division. We're going to begin tonight with invocation and pledge to the flag. Here to do the honors is Dr. Michelle Mitchell, Executive Director of Support Services.
One second, Dr. Mitchell.
Excuse me, Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Do you want to certify the closed session?
No, we are in recess from our closed session at this time.
Recession, okay.
And we are going to continue that session at the end of the meeting.
Excellent.
Good evening. I am honored to share the invocation and lead the pledge of allegiance. The invocation tonight is in recognition of all of our teachers and educators. It is entitled "The Star Polisher." I have a great job in the universe of occupations. What do I do? I'm a star polisher. It's a very important job. If you want to know how important, just go out at night and look at the stars twinkling and sparkling. You see, I'm a teacher, an educator, and mentor. The stars are the children in my class. My job is to take them in whatever shape they come and shine and buff them and send them out to take their places as bright, twinkling beacons in the sky. They come into my room in all shapes and sizes, and I buff and polish. I train and teach my little stars. I tell them that the world cannot do without them. Each night, as I look at the sky, I'm reminded of my very important job and awesome responsibility. Then I get my soft, buffing cloth and my bottle of polish in preparation for tomorrow for my class of little stars. Teachers, on behalf of all of us, we appreciate what you do. Every educator in Newport News Public Schools, you are truly a polisher, and we appreciate it. At this time, please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. And tonight, we have several celebrities in our midst. I know that we're going to do some school board recognitions, but before we do that, I want to invite a special student from Denby High School, Abdallah Elrahal, to come and share some words. He has a fantastic story of his senior year, the last two years of his of high school that he wants to share with us tonight, and we're still very grateful that he's been able to share that, he's able to come and share that with us. He's got a plane to catch because he's off to, off to college, and we're going to let him speak early tonight.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Wow. I just realized this is the last time I'll be speaking to a group with my hair. Thank you for inviting me here tonight. As the board knows, I was accepted to 89 universities, including three service academies and one Army ROTC scholarship out of Virginia University. I earned more than $8.8 million in scholarships and grants. I've committed to attending the U.S. Air Force Academy, and my flight is tonight. My father had lost his engineering job for 1.5 years in my early years of high school, which qualified for a SAT waiver resulting in a college board fee waiver and fee waivers for universities. I did have to pay for a few applications, but most were free. I'm thankful for this opportunity exists for our NMPS students. I would like to thank the many teachers, staff, coaches, and administration that have helped me along my journey. There are too many to name, but my senior year teachers had to put with a, with a lot from me. I was juggling a different schedule than many students: Governor's School Ingenuity classes, Virtual Virginia classes, and in-person classes at Denby High School and the Aviation Academy. I was constantly running from one location in class to another. All of my teachers were flexible and understanding. The staff worked with me, and it allowed me to have this opportunity to soar academically. I cannot express my genuine appreciation enough. With all my college applications, numerous application portal, scholarship applications, and letters of recommendation, I really worked my teachers and staff. Thank you to Ms. Evans, Ms. Rodriguez, Ms. Brown, and Ms. Huffsteller for making sure all those last-minute requests got and taken care of. I know I aggravated you sometimes. I'm thankful for my Aviation Academy teachers, Governor's School teachers, and Denby High School teachers, Booker T. Washington Middle School teachers, Deer Park Elementary School teachers, and the teachers I had in kindergarten and first grade at Setchfield. Thank you to my coaches, soccer, swimming, cross-country, tennis, and volleyball, for giving me the athletic and leadership skills needed to get where I am today. Thank you for the cafeteria staff that made sure there was a lunch waiting for me when I arrived late for school, for lunch, went from the transition between my Governor's School classes and Denby classes. I would have, I would have been hungry all afternoon without them. Everyone that has played an important role, part in teaching, coaching, mentoring, discipline, and helping me, I thank you so much. They all know who they are. I wish I could name each one of them, but there is not enough time. Thank you to the school board for offering programs such as summer classes, Ingenuity, Virtual Virginia, eighth-period classes due enrollment, AB, AP, and IB classes, New Horizons CTE classes, Governor's School, multiple magnet schools, and other programs. These programs help NMPS students to prepare, to be prepared for the workforce, leadership in the military, and help our students to get accepted to top-tier universities. To students that have the college application process coming up, don't limit yourself. Check each school's common data sheet to see their acceptance and scholarship stats to see if they're worth applying to. Volunteer, get involved, get good grades, start the application process in the end of 11th grade, foster relationships between teachers and staff, and good luck. You can do this. And one thing I struggle with that I highly suggest future students to do better than I did with it was procrastination and organization. Those were my weaknesses and almost my demise. Own your weakness and strive to correct them before you graduate from high school. Thank you and congratulations to my fellow NMPS classmates of 2022. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elrahal. We know that you're going to be extremely successful in your Air Force career. We, we wish you all the best, and we know that you're going to represent this community very well at the Air Force Academy. We definitely, the board invites you to come back and speak anytime because we'd love to hear more about your story and how you progress. I believe that some of the Denby High School family are here this evening. If you could stand up and be recognized at this time. As Mr. Elrahal acknowledged, he was able to do this because of all the support and care that he received from his community. So, thank you so much. You're showing what you're, what is possible in Newport News Public Schools, and we very sincerely appreciate you coming down to speak to us tonight. All right, and with that, Dr. Parker?
Yes.
Oh, and yes, and can we acknowledge his, his family that is here with him tonight? You can stand up. We know that I've had several conversations, text messages and emails with moms. So, you've got a great cheerleader in your corner that is extremely supportive. I felt that, I felt that support, knew that in, in the exchanges that we've had. So, we're all extremely proud of you. And Dr. Parker, I believe we have some more celebrities in our midst and some more recognitions to do tonight.
Yes, sir. Let's go ahead with the business honor roll recipients.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Price, and I have the honor of presenting this month's recognitions. Each year, the Virginia School Boards Association invites local school boards to nominate businesses and organizations to the VSBA Business Honor Roll. Newport News Public Schools has numerous partners that support education. However, this year, three organizations stood out. To select the 2022 Business Honor Roll nominees, the school board and administration looked at organizations that have distinguished themselves in an extra-special way this year or over the course of many years. This year, the school board voted to name Community Nights, Anthem Healthkeepers Plus, and the Newsome Bailey Project to the 2022 VSBA Business Honor Roll in recognition of their ongoing commitment to Newport News Public Schools. Our first honoree is Anthem Healthkeepers Plus. Present this evening to accept this recognition is Gina Ladoen, Community Relations Representative. Please come forward. Ms. Ladoen and Anthem Healthkeepers Plus is receiving a resolution of recognition from the Newport News School Board and a certificate of recognition from the Virginia School Boards Association. The resolution reads in part, Newport News School Board Resolution of Recognition Naming Anthem Healthkeepers Plus to the 2022 Virginia School Boards Association Business Honor Roll. Whereas public schools and local businesses and organizations are an integral part of the community, and whereas many local businesses play a crucial role in supporting our schools, and whereas the economic health of our community, state, and nation depends on a strong public school system, whereas collaboration between local public schools and local businesses strengthens schools and the business community alike by providing a well-trained and highly educated workforce, whereas an excellent public school system is vital to the quality of life in this community and fundamental to preserving a strong democratic society now and in the future, and whereas Anthem Healthkeepers Plus has consistently gone above and beyond for Title I schools and Newport News Public Schools to support students, families, and school division staff, and whereas the dedicated staff of Anthem Healthkeepers Plus has promoted student success by donating trike bikes to expand books on bike Newport News, supporting special events including Read Across America and promotion ceremonies, sponsoring science, technology, engineering, and math programs, numerous school courtyard projects, the Catherine Johnson Elementary School Crimson Thunder Drumline, the Health and Fitness Room at Achievable Dream Academy, and attendance incentives at Title I schools, and providing medical resources for families. And whereas the Virginia School Boards Association established a business honor roll to recognize local businesses that play a key role in supporting our communities and local schools. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Newport News School Board place Anthem Healthkeepers Plus on the statewide Virginia School Boards Association Business Honor Roll, calling attention to its ongoing commitment to Newport News Public Schools and its students. And it is signed by all the members of the school board and the superintendent. So, we thank you for your service and support of Newport News Public Schools.
Thank you. And Ms. Ladoen, I'd like to acknowledge, I know you have some family members joining you tonight. Would you please stand and be recognized? Thank you for joining her.
The next organization named to the VSBA Business Honor Roll is the Newsome Bailey Project, represented by John Crowley and Ken Searls Law, members of the Board of Directors. Gentlemen, would you please come forward? They are also receiving a resolution and a certificate from the Virginia School Boards Association. The resolution reads in part, I won't subject you to the whole thing, Newport News School Board Resolution of Recognition Naming Newsome Bailey Project to the 2022 Virginia School Boards Association Business Honor Roll. And whereas Newsome Bailey Project, a faith-based nonprofit organization in Newport News that partners with educational therapists, tutors, and volunteers who work together to equip and empower underserved students and their families, and whereas the dedicated staff and volunteers of the Newsome Bailey Project have promoted student success and development through tutoring, mentoring, and numerous other programs, and whereas in close partnership with Newport News Public Schools, the Newsome Bailey Educational Therapy Program is conducted during the school day and after school, either in the school building or off-site during extended school closures. For more than a decade, the organization has provided educational services to students from Newsome Park Elementary and Marshall Early Learning Center, along with enrichment activities, including family dinners, horseback riding, swimming lessons, and more. And whereas the Virginia School Boards Association established a business honor roll to recognize local businesses and organizations that play a key role in supporting our communities and local schools. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Newport News School Board place Newsome Bailey Project on the statewide Virginia School Board Association Business Honor Roll, calling attention to its ongoing commitment to Newport News Public Schools and its students. And again, it's signed by all members of the board and the superintendent. Thank you so very much for your service.
Thank you. And I also, I know there's a lot of time and commitment goes into the work that they do, so I'd also like to acknowledge their family members joining them tonight. I know Mr. Crowley's wife is here. Thank you for joining us. And thank you. And Mr. Searls Law, beautiful wife, who's sitting right up here.
Our third honoree couldn't join us tonight, so we will be honoring and recognizing Community Nights at a future school board meeting. Our next recognition this evening is the acknowledgement of service for Amaya Patterson, the student representative to the school board. In honor of her distinguished service to the school board and Newport News Public Schools, she's also receiving, Amaya, would you please come down? A resolution and an award as well. Her resolution reads, Newport News School Board Resolution of Recognition Presented to Amaya C. Patterson, the 2021-22 Student Representative to the Newport News School Board. Whereas the Newport News School Board approved in 2004 the creation of the position of student representative to the school board to increase board awareness of the views of students and to provide a peer with whom students could share ideas for improving education, and whereas Amaya C. Patterson, a senior at Woodside High School, was elected according to the approved procedures by the members of the Student Advisory Group on Education, and whereas Ms. Patterson served in this capacity from July 2021 through June 2022, faithfully attending meetings of the school board and participating in numerous other school board functions, and whereas Ms. Patterson actively sought student ideas on educational issues and pursued information and experiences that would assist her efforts to provide valuable insights during discussion of school board meeting agenda items, and whereas Ms. Patterson diligently fulfilled all the duties of the position of student representative while also continuing to excel in her advanced coursework, serving as a senior class vice president, a member of the Thespian Honor Society, the Woodside High School Magnet Council, the Student-Athlete Leadership Team, and the Theater Magnet Production Crew, earning recognition as a nationally awarded competitive dancer and volunteering in her church and community. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Newport News School Board that Amaya C. Patterson is to be highly commended for her exemplary service, dedication, and commitment during her tenure as student representative to the school board. Congratulations and thank you for your service.
Now, I know the whole board would want to take a picture.
Oh, yes.
So, do you want to do that during the break?
We can do it there.
That's up to you, sir.
Okay. I think it's Brown, but if you want to do that during the break, we can, the board can come down and take a picture.
Okay.
And we'll do it during the break.
Okay. Before we do that, I'd like to acknowledge her family.
Yes.
Would you please stand and be recognized? Thank you for sharing her. Absolutely. Thank you. Again, we congratulate all of tonight's honorees, and we wish Ms. Patterson congratulations on her graduation and best wishes for the next chapter, whatever that may bring. And as Mr. Brown always says, please come back and let us know how you're doing, okay? At this time, we'll take about a five-minute break so that honorees and their families may leave. If you choose to do so, you're welcome to stay. During this time, our viewing audience will have an opportunity to view this month's school board spotlight. So, we'll stand in recess for about five minutes. Thank you.
Young ladies across Newport News Public Schools are realizing their limitless potential, one run at a time. This spring, five Newport News elementary schools participated in Girls on the Run, which offers a fun, experience-based curriculum that creatively integrates running to inspire girls to be joyful, healthy, and confident. To make Girls on the Run accessible to more students, Newport News Public Schools paid for every young lady's registration cost, and Adidas gave brand-new running shoes to each girl. At Charles, Greenwood, Hydenwood, Catherine Johnson, and Knollwood Meadows Elementary Schools, third through fifth-grade students stayed after school twice a week to build social, emotional, and physical life skills through fun lessons, team-building activities, and different types of runs. Educators and community volunteers led engaging and thought-provoking lessons that taught girls how to compromise, respond in difficult situations, encourage their friends, build compassion for others, and harness their star power to visualize and achieve greatness. Through open discussions and activities focused on building trust, girls from different grades quickly bonded, beginning a journey as lifelong friends. Each lesson was reinforced by a fun running activity, such as sprinting to a cone that revealed their emotions, a friendly relay race, or an easy jog around the blacktop. Near the end of the curriculum, students used what they learned to put a community service project into action. The ladies at Charles Elementary read a book about filling others' figurative buckets with kind acts. They then wrote positive messages of encouragement to every teacher and hustled around the school to fill their literal buckets with love. And at Hydenwood, students went plogging, a fun Swedish word that combines running with picking up. The girls spent an afternoon running around their school while scouting for trash, and then retracing their steps while filling trash bags to beautify the grounds around their school. Each week, as their miles increased, so did their confidence, leading to a season-ending race. For dozens of schools and teams across Hampton Roads, Girls on the Run hosted a 5K race upon the picturesque landscape of Virginia Wesleyan University. On a humid Sunday morning, a thousand young ladies, accompanied by an adult running partner, including parents, family members, and caring educators, towed the starting line to conquer 3.1 miles, a distance that weeks ago sounded impossible to even consider. Harnessing their star power, Girls on the Run made the impossible possible, putting their strength and endurance on display in front of hundreds of cheering supporters. But more importantly, these young ladies proved to themselves what they are capable of. Not just capable of finishing a 5K race, but having the bravery to challenge themselves physically, emotionally, and in full view of their peers, to create healthy habits, strong characters, and caring hearts for others. Thanks to Girls on the Run, these young ladies are really going places.
For students in Newport News Public Schools, immersive learning activities make STEM education relevant and engaging. Designing and constructing creative solutions to real-world problems is an exciting way to learn. And luckily, many of these fun engineering projects can be replicated at home for hours of family fun. You've probably heard the common phrase, one man's trash is another man's design challenge, or something like that. Well, save your plastic bottles, cardboard boxes, and other recyclable materials to build any number of engineering creations at home. Your repurposed materials could become a working claw to pick up underwater treasures, a looping roller coaster track for a marble, a structure built to withstand earthquake forces, or a landing craft with a parachute recovery system to safely journey to other planets. You can even build structures based on your favorite stories. Read a book that your children enjoy, and then watch the story come alive by building a creation inspired by the literary tale. The world's greatest shipbuilders are found right in our city at Newport News Shipbuilding. Your family can build your own floating vessels with some aluminum foil and a whole lot of creative engineering. Fill a sink or tub with water, and lay coins or any small-weighted objects on your floating craft to see who has designed the mightiest ship. Children love to create, and their feelings of accomplishment when they share their engineered creations is a priceless moment. Embrace these victorious moments at home by building and creating together.
Security Officer Derek Gary uses the sport of basketball as a tool, a tool that helps build relationships, teach life skills, and enhance self-confidence. As the security officer at both Hydenwood and Riverside Elementary Schools, Officer Gary wanted to create a fun experience outside of the classroom to help fourth and fifth-grade students feel connected to their schools. So, the first-ever Newport News Public Schools co-ed elementary basketball league was born. Students who showed an interest in participating and who would benefit socially and personally from a positive team experience were invited to try out. To remain on the team, students had to complete their schoolwork on time and have no discipline referrals. This was a wonderful reminder to the young student athletes that the title "student" comes before "athlete." Coaches and educators witnessed the students taking their commitment to the team seriously by making good decisions in the classroom and growing as positive school citizens. With staff and administrators helping to coach, the teams held after-school practices to work on basketball skills, learn to play within a team system, and develop positive sportsmanship traits. For many of the student players, this was their first experience playing on an organized team, so the educators wanted them all to create positive memories. Hydenwood and Riverside played two games against each other, giving both schools a chance to host a game. Both times, the away teams were victorious, with Riverside winning a close game at Hydenwood, and then, two days later, Hydenwood winning a hard-fought match. This allowed students to enjoy the thrill of victory and emotionally cope with the sting of defeat. At both games, families and teachers showed up en masse, creating a spirited environment with standing room only. Riverside even formed the Bear Squad to enthusiastically cheer on their classmates. By creating this experience, Officer Derek Gary gave young student athletes the opportunity to develop life skills that extend far beyond the court, as they learned the importance of being connected to a team, a school, and their family through commitment and dedication.
Welcome back. We hope you enjoyed this month's school board spotlight. During our regular meetings, we provide time for the public to address the school board. These opportunities are scheduled in the early part of our agenda and also towards the end of the meeting. The school board recognizes that The School Board recognizes that during the pandemic, some members of the public may not be able to join us in person. As advertised, citizens may submit comments via a web form, email, or voicemail up to thirty minutes prior to our meeting, time to be included in the official meeting record. For those of you joining us in person, the Board considers this an opportunity to listen to your comments. Please understand that we will consider your concerns and respond at a later date. We ask that you comply with our three-minute time limit. As you begin your comments, a green light will come on at the end of the dais, a yellow light signals that you have thirty seconds remaining, and a red light indicates that your time is up. At this time, as I call your name, would you please come forward? Chris Fryman.
Hello. I'll just start?
Yes, go ahead.
First time doing this, so. Good evening. I want to say thank you to Mr. Harris and Mr. Brown for voting no on this one. It was put up on the board in 2017. I'm against the school bus stop armed camera systems that you have in place. I find it to be more of a danger to public safety. And to give you an example, I myself ran into one of these tickets. I tried to sequester from the Transportation Department the windshield camera as well as thirty seconds before to show that blind turns were made as well as... I was clearing an intersection at the time. What this ran into was me going down the rabbit hole, if you will. I looked up Virginia CDL laws. I found out that the notification according to 46.2-1090 says that a school bus only has to give you 200 feet of amber light notice before coming to the stop. My instance, I've noticed that the drivers are popping their arms out immediately. If you look at the stop timetables of 46.2-880, it conflicts where semis need more time to stop than a school bus. Also, school buses are lower setting than a traffic light, so anything that can block a school bus would be anything the size of a school bus, or if you're in a hoop-dee, a small car, any SUV would probably block your line of sight to see if the bus was stopping. These buses are remaining on Jefferson. I've noticed, I went through the data, at least up until February, Jefferson, Warwick, Denby, all are high-ticket areas. There are also, I believe it's an infrastructure issue with how wide the roads are, the speed limits are 45. According to Virginia CDLs, the CDL Table 2.11 on Page 32, a semi truck needs 319 feet to stop. This all conflicts. You also, maybe not view it as a school bus for the public, but view it as a stoplight that is moving and you're not exactly sure where it is going to stop. I also, we were also told the public that it was going to be a 60-40 split. When I looked up the revenues, there is a tech fee that front runs this contract because of all these extra goodies that were done. That tech fee is $62,715 a month. That has to be made every month through ticket revenues, or else you will run a deficit from month to month. The company has taken, I think in the first year was like 27% of the money is retained. For some reason, after January, there's been an increase in the revenue, so I don't know if that's backlog from court dates or not, because I know the court dates have been pushed back from people I've talked to. If you let the tech fee run the full course of the contract, this equipment will run $3,605,906... Sorry, 6.3 or 3.6 million dollars, give or take. Newport News has collected up to now 1.4 million. Bus Patrol has collected 2.1 million. Again, I'm getting into all this provision. A company I asked to give a quote to was giving me a quote for the whole system rig minus the ticket system for 1.3 million.
Mr. Fryman, yes, I'm sorry, your time is expired.
Understood, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Cheryl Avant.
Good evening, Dr. Parker and Board. My name is Cheryl Avant, and I have a company, Positive Products, and then I also have a nonprofit, which is an off-branch of that, which is the youth program off of Positive Products. And I'm a native of Newport News. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. This is my first time coming in here too. That's just a brief I prepared for you all. And so my agenda is basically the background, the purpose, the mission, my products, the website, the app, and the price list of some of the things that I have. So I come before you because I have a concern with the gun violence in this area. And I moved away back in, when I graduated from Christopher Newport, back in 88. And, but, I love Newport News, and the school system, the education I got here was great because I feel like I'm a product of, you know, this education that we have here. So when I decided to come back, my daughter was in eighth grade, and so she went over here to the school right here, the middle school right here. I can't think of it right now. And then she went to, she goes to Heritage High School. So before the shootings, before the shooting happened at Heritage, all the other shootings were happening, and it was just breaking my heart. And then when this shooting happened here at Heritage, you know, that's really the last thing a parent want to hear. And I got the text from my daughter, "Mom, somebody is shooting. I'm in the storage closet upstairs, and somebody is shooting downstairs." And she plays volleyball on the team, so I know that they were doing construction on the building, and she thought that that's what it was. And she was on her way down the stairs to go to transition to the other school that she goes to for cosmetology. She's at Heritage in the STEM program, and she's doing excellent. But unlike other parents, I have my child to wake up to and to enjoy the, you know, her milestones like we all want to. So I developed Positive Products years ago. So I just want to partner with Newport News School System. And our mission basically is to trigger the human response in our youth and our teens and young adults to get them to think before deciding to pick up a gun and pull the trigger, to take a life or destroy their own life in the process of being incarcerated or killing themselves. And I know this is a very sensitive subject matter, but, you know, I just felt like it was just placed on my heart to, in the creative mind that I have, to just have things like this. And I can share with you all later. I know my time is up.
Yes, your time has expired.
But anyway, I just have products that I would like to share if I get an opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Avant. All right. Next card to have is Raylan Johnson, or Baylen Johnson.
Good evening. I'm Raylan Johnson. I am the parent to Kair Johnson. On May 26th, there was an incident at Huntington Middle School. He was attacked by five security guards. I also have the video where it shows him walking down the hallway, and they grab his arm and they sling him and they take him underneath the stairwell. And the stairwell is the same place where the guy pulled out the gun that she was talking about. And there's no cameras under there, so I can't see what else they did to him. He ended up with concussion. He's in the sixth grade, who he's only 12 years old and weighs 100 pounds. He's in advanced classes. He has really good grades. He's funny. He doesn't do anything wrong. I feel as though something needs to happen. Like, I know that there was a school shooting in Texas, and they say, "Well, we need more security." I feel like you should really pick who security is in the schools. Like, if they're having a bad day, don't take it out on the kids. I know that the police were there earlier due to another incident with another 12-year-old, and I feel like they got amped up and was just waiting for something else to happen. But my son didn't do anything wrong, so I just feel like it should be looked into. It's not just about the pay and the money. If you like kids and you want to protect them, then do that. Also, while they were doing this to him, I was at the front door, and they wouldn't let me in the school. So I felt bad because it hurts my heart that I couldn't save or help my child, my son. And he depends on me because I'm the mother he has. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I do have, I do have a card from, that would normally go to Item 6 of our agenda without objection from the Board. Then, because we only have one additional card, I'll allow the card to be read at this time. Is there any objection from the Board? Now noted, so Amina Willard.
Hello. My name is Amina Matheny Willard. I'm an attorney, and I am here because of what happened to Raylan Johnson's son. I'm extremely disturbed with the way he was treated. He's 12 years, 12 years old. He was violently assaulted by not only five security guards, but there were also two counselors there. This happened at Huntington Middle School. As Raylan indicated, he was ushered under the stairs. Why? I have no idea. What I do know is there's no cameras there, so that's disturbing. Besides the fact that this incident is disturbing, what's even more disturbing is that the principal, Ebony Griffin, signed a disciplinary notice, which is contrary to the video evidence in this case. So what I plan on doing is shedding light on this situation. I think all of you have gotten a letter from me, with the exception of Ms. Patterson. So you all should have received that letter. And besides coming here to the School Board, I do plan on going to all of the news media, social media. My goal is to shed light to make sure this doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Willard. All right. Madam Clerk, are there any additional cards? There being no additional cards, we will move on to Item 3 of our agenda. Citizens, we thank you for your comments this evening. We are now on to Section 3, the Consent Agenda, which includes 3.01, minutes from the work session, May 17th, 2022; 3.02, minutes of the regular meeting, May 17th, 2022; 3.03, minutes from the special meeting, May 17th, 2022; 3.04, financial reports, including the revenue report for May 2022, the expense report for May 2022, child nutrition reports for May 2022; 3.05, the personnel report; 3.06, budget transfer. At this time, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Harris. Any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Ely? Mr. Harris? Mr. Hunter? Mrs. Searle's Law? Mrs. Aiman? Dr. Best? Mr. Brown? Motion carries 7-0.
We also have some personnel recommendations from the superintendent this evening that you all had a chance to review. May I have a motion to approve the superintendent's personnel recommendations?
Yes, I have a motion to approve the superintendent's personnel recommendations for Roland Noel for Principal, Gildersleeve Middle School; Suzanne Ramirez for Assistant Principal, Yates Elementary School; James Jones Jr. for Assistant Principal of Operations, Denby High School; Dr. Angela Montes for Principal for Catherine Johnson Elementary School; and Justin Conyers, Assistant Principal for Woodside High School; and finally, Wayne Santos, the Second Executive Director of Technology.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. You heard the motion. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Harris. Any questions? There being no further discussion, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
We're all clear. Mr. Ely? Mr. Harris? Mr. Hunter? Mrs. Searle's Law? Mrs. Aiman? Dr. Best? Mr. Brown? Motion carries 7-0.
All right. I think they deserve a round of applause. Dr. Barber, you have some information to share with us on each of the appointments that were made.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Just some outstanding business from our last meeting. Mr. Shay Coats is with us this evening. He was appointed as the Executive Director of Transportation at the last board meeting, but was not able to join us. So we always love to see Mr. Coats and wanted to congratulate him on that, on that appointment to Executive Director, Mr. Coats. And moving on to tonight's appointments, we have, I'd first introduce, I'd like to introduce Mr. Justin Conyers as the Assistant Principal at Woodside High School. Mr. Conyers, would you please stand? Good evening. Mr. Conyers has an Educational Specialist Advanced Certificate in Educational Leadership from Old Dominion University, a master's degree in education from Liberty University, and a bachelor of science degree from Old Dominion University. He currently works for Hampton Public Schools as a behavior specialist. He has worked as a special education teacher at Nansville River High School and John Yates Middle School in Suffolk. He also worked as an in-school suspension coordinator in Western Branch, at Western Branch High School in Chesapeake. Mr. Conyers, welcome to Newport News Public Schools. I see you have family with you. Would you like to introduce yourself and your family to the community tonight?
I'm Mr. Conyers. As he stated, this is my wife Danielle.
Conyers, we don't have any additional supplements. I just want to let you... Welcome aboard. Welcome aboard. All right. And thank you, and welcome to your family as well. Beautiful family. I'd also like to introduce Susan Ramirez as the new principal for Yates Elementary School. Mrs. Ramirez, would you please stand? Miss Ramirez has a master's degree in education with graduate honors in educational leadership from Regent University and bachelor's degree of science in elementary education from Sam Houston University, Sam Houston State University, excuse me. Ms. Ramirez currently works as an assistant principal at Sanford Elementary School. She has previously worked as a teacher and testing coordinator. Ms. Ramirez has previously worked for Anarundel County Public Schools, Jefferson County Public School District, and Houston Independent School District as a teacher and summer school principal. Congratulations, Ms. Ramirez, on your appointment and your promotion in Newport News. And would you please also introduce yourself and if you have family joining you this evening?
This is my husband, Robert Ramirez, and Ms. Omen, the principal of Sanford Elementary.
And we are sorry to break up such a dynamic duo, but we definitely look forward to your leadership at Yates Elementary School. I'd like to introduce our next appointment, Mr. Roland Noel, as the new principal at Gildersleeve Middle School. Mr. Noel, would you please stand? Mr. Noel has a master's degree in arts, in arts and education from George Washington University and a bachelor of arts in English from Stony Brook University. Mr. Noel currently works as an assistant principal of operations at Denby High School. Mr. Noel has been an assistant principal at Dozier Middle School and Passage Middle Schools. He also served as a lead teacher at Woodside. Congratulations this evening on your appointment, Mr. Noel, and we'd like you to introduce yourself and any family members or friends joining us this evening.
I'm Noel, and I'm with my large family, and my wife's village, my cousins, and the in-laws of my grandkids.
We look forward to your leadership, sir, and thank you for your, for your leadership in Newport News for this long. I'd like to introduce Mr. James Jones Jr. as the new assistant principal of operations at Denby High School. Mr. Jones has a master's degree of arts in educational leadership from Regent University, his bachelor of arts from St. Paul's College, and he is pursuing his doctorate at Old Dominion University. Mr. Jones currently works as an assistant principal at Jones Magnet Middle School in Hampton Public Schools, where he has also served as a teacher and summer school site coordinator. He comes to Newport News with 24 years of experience. We welcome you, Mr. Jones, to this, to Newport News, our Newport News family, and we'd like you to do the same. Introduce yourself and your family. So now we have the whole family on our payroll. That's great. That is great. Welcome, welcome to Newport News, Mr. Jones. And in our last meeting, we did not get, get the opportunity to meet this pointee, but she is here this evening. At the last School Board meeting, we introduced Dr. Angela Montpass, the new principal of Catherine Johnson Elementary School. Ms. Montpass, good evening. Give her a round of applause. Give her a round of applause. And I'm sorry, it's Dr. Montpass. And Dr. Montpass was not able to join us, so I will read her bio for this evening for the board to introduce themselves. Dr. Montpass has her doctorate in Educational Leadership and Policy Analysis from the University of Wisconsin Madison, a master's degree in literacy instruction, and a bachelor's degree in international relations and social science, both from Michigan State University. Dr. Montpass worked as an elementary school principal in Madison, Wisconsin. She has worked as the Director of Curriculum and Instruction, instructional facilitator and district reading specialist, supervisor, and literacy coach in Wisconsin. We welcome you, Dr. Montpass, to Newport News, and glad to see you finally here in person. And would you please introduce yourself and your family members who are joining you this evening?
Thank you. I'm Dr. Angela Montpass. This is my husband, Joe.
Welcome to Newport News. And we look forward to you joining our family and look forward to your leadership. Unable to join us this evening because we just cleared the hurdle, but we are going to introduce at the July 1, possibly, or the next available opportunity with the board, Mr. Wayne Santos II as the new Executive Director of Technology. Mr. Santos has a master's degree of business administration, technology management from Colorado Technical University, and a bachelor's degree in information technology from Kaplan University. Mr. Santos is currently a co-partner for Amtech Salute Cyber Solutions. He also has worked for Capital One as the Division Head for Fintech Security Cyber Risk, the Department of Defense Training and Doctrine Command as Chief Technology Officer, and the Department of Army, of the Army, as the Director of Cybersecurity Operations. We will soon have an opportunity to meet Mr. Santos in person and introduce him to the Newport News family. We welcome him aboard as well, if he is viewing. And, Mr. Chairman, that concludes our appointments for this evening.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Parker, and congratulations to all our pointees. The next item on our agenda is section four, action items. The first is 4.01, the 2022-23 federal funding applications. Dr. Parker, do you have any summary for us?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, the report was provided at the last board meeting, and at this time, we're prepared to engage any questions if the board has any regarding that federal funding application.
All right. May I have a motion to approve the 2022-23 federal funding applications?
Yes, I have a motion to approve the Title I, Title II, Title III, and IV Part A applications in the amount of thirteen million, seven hundred, three dollars, or three, one hundred and forty-three dollars. Excuse me, there are too many zeros at the very end.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. You heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Best. All right. At this time, are there any questions from the board members? Hearing no questions, is there any further discussion? All right. That being said, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Four.
Mrs. Amon?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
We will now move on to section five, reports and information. The first item is 5.01, new and revised policies. Dr. Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will bring Mrs. Brooks up to the podium. I see some of our pointees still here. It's not too late to go out and have dinner and enjoy with your families unless you would like to stay for the remainder of the meeting.
My feelings will not be hurt.
And again, congratulations.
Yes, congratulations.
It's always exciting to welcome new members to our team, so we look forward to working with them.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Parker. It's a pleasure to share highlights from 15 new and revised policies and procedures with you this evening, which will complete the policy committee's review of the instructional chapter for this school year. You may recall that in the fall of 2020, we began the systematic review of our 11 policy chapters over a five-year period while continuing to develop or update the policies that may be required by changes in state and federal laws each year. So this evening, we are excited to complete the review of the fourth policy chapter in our timeline, which is on instruction. I would like to thank our Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Tina Manglamon and her team, for sharing their expertise so that we could complete this most important work. In working on this last group of instructional policies, the committee reviewed approximately 51 documents, including 33 policies and 18 procedures and exhibits in the chapter. We made revisions to 42 policies, procedures, and exhibits combined. Now, while some revisions were minor edits to position titles and program names, others were to streamline the policy language and to align the policies to new state standards, our strategic plan, Journey 2025, to new school division processes, and to nationally-recognized best practices. So I'd like to highlight just a few of the newer revised policies and procedures, so I've grouped them under these four areas: the curriculum, textbooks and materials, teachers, and student learning. And so the first group of policies relate to the curriculum. This first policy on curriculum development, adoption, implementation, and review states that the school division's curriculum will be consistent with the state's standards of learning. We added language that the taught and assessed curriculum will be aligned to the written curriculum, and that teachers will be provided with detailed instructional units that contain lessons, assessments, resources, and technology integration tools that will also be aligned to the SOLs. This next policy on curricular offerings was updated to add the school division's focus on ISTEM in the curriculum, which is interdisciplinary science, technology, engineering, and math education, and on the skills that are necessary to graduate college, career, and citizen-ready. Our family life education policy was revised to align it with the Virginia Department of Education's Family Life Education Standards of Learning and with the Code of Virginia. The revision maintains the Family Life Advisory Committee, the opportunities for parents and families to review the curriculum, and an opt-out provision for parents to excuse their students from all or part of the program. Teaching about religion is addressed in this next policy, which was reorganized to provide greater clarity in the policy's focus and language. For example, we added language that religious or seasonally themed music in school division performances is allowed if there is a curricular purpose and is taught in a factual, objective, and respectful manner. The next two policies this evening will focus on textbooks and materials. This policy was updated to reflect the school division's current process for selecting textbooks and presenting recommendations to the school board for adoption. For example, for subjects such as career and technical education, music, and driver education that do not have official state-approved textbooks, we added that those books will be selected from a list of evidence-based resources and texts that are approved by the school division's Office of Teaching and Learning. The books for advanced placement, international baccalaureate, and dual enrollment courses will be selected by the instructors for those courses. This new procedure guides the school division in selecting a wide range of materials for our school libraries. The procedure addresses the criteria for selecting library materials, access to electronic materials, donations to library collections, the formation of school media committees to review potential materials, and the reconsideration process for challenge materials, which will be led by each school's library media specialist, and will include the building principal and a combination of teachers, reading specialists, instructional coaches, and parents. The parent representative on the committee will be recommended by the building principal, will have a child or children currently enrolled in the school, and will have earned a high school diploma or higher. The third group of policies this evening relate to teachers and training. This policy currently refers to educators who teach outside of core instruction as resource teachers. We revised the policy to focus on reading and mathematics intervention teachers who support students in need of targeted instruction. So to reflect this updated focus, we are recommending to rename this policy Reading and Math Intervention Teachers. A part of this school division's commitment to creating positive school cultures and climates includes developing our employees' capacity for cultural competence. So we expanded our current policy on multiculturalism to include the cultural competency training required by the state code for all teachers and licensed administrators every two years, beginning with the 2022-2023 school year. The added language also meets the state requirement for including this training in school board policy. Now, the fourth and final group of policies and procedures this evening pertain to student learning. We revised our policy on student schedules and course loads to add an emphasis on involving students in career exploration, industry-driven curriculum, work-based opportunities, and pathways to careers that directly prepare them for post-secondary activities. We removed the requirement that students take a full schedule of seven courses to allow them greater flexibility to participate in virtual learning, internships, job shattering, and other opportunities. Our next program on school program options recognizes that students need varying instructional models to support their individual learning styles. So in support of this philosophy, NMPS offers three types of school programs: comprehensive, magnet, and specialty academies. The Innovation Institute, which you heard about in a report a couple of months ago, was added to the policy as a new specialty academy designed to offer students a program of online learning experiences. NMPS students have the opportunity to dual enroll or take post-secondary courses before they complete their requirements for high school graduation. Our current dual enrollment policy is geared towards students who perform at a higher level academically. We've revised that policy to encourage all students to take rigorous courses and to provide opportunities for students who may want to dual enroll to explore areas of study leading to potential career paths. Next, we revised our policy on the evaluation of student learning to reflect the school division's balanced assessment system that includes diagnostic, benchmark, and state assessments. We added language to the policy that recognizes families as partners in education and commits the school division to communicating student progress home to families on a regular basis. To reflect a practice currently in place, we added language that any student who performs below grade level on diagnostic, benchmark, or state assessments will receive a formal letter home, and family conferences will be scheduled with teachers and staff. In the class rankings policy and procedure, we are recommending to change the computation of a student's class rank from the 100th place to the 1,000th place with no rounding off for greater clarity. The current procedure also allows the student to repeat a course with only the higher of two grades being computed in the student's grade point average. And for further clarification, we added that this only applies when an identical course is taken. This next procedure addresses considerations for accelerating students up a grade level. At the elementary and middle school levels, a school-based committee convened by the building principal was added as part of the decision-making process. The school committee will confer its findings to the school division's Chief Academic Officer or appropriate executive director before rendering a final decision on accelerating a student. Under the high school section, we added examples of programs with courses considered to be accelerated or above grade level, such as honors, advanced placement, international baccalaureate, the Governor's School for Science and Technology, dual enrollment, and early college. Our last policy for the evening focuses on homework, which is an extension of classroom concepts and skills. We are recommending to remove the times allotted for homework by grade level from our current policy and to replace them with language that the time to complete homework will vary by class and student. We also added the statement that the complexity of honors, advanced placement, international baccalaureate, governor's school, dual enrollment, and early college programs may require more time for homework than the time required for other high school courses. So in terms of our next steps, the revised policies will come before the school board for action at your July 1 meeting or later meeting, and once approved, the revised policies, procedures, and exhibits will be posted on our school division websites and disseminated to schools and public libraries. So this concludes my report for this evening, and joining me to answer questions is Dr. Joanne Jones, our Executive Director for Curriculum and Development, and I'd like to thank her and Dr. Manglamon and their team for helping us to complete the review of all of the policies and the instruction, no chapter, that have come before you this evening. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Questions from the board? Yes, Ms. Amon?
I have a comment if there aren't any questions.
Okay. Let me just make sure that there's no questions first before we go to comments. Any questions? All right, please go ahead, Ms. Amon.
I just, this is just a comment to the rest of the board. I serve on the policy committee as one of my committee assignments, and we went over many of these in our May meeting. And at the conclusion of it, I understood that some of them had gotten to, they were presenting to the committee very recently before our meeting, and they were possibly going to go back and retool some of them. Given the dates of the drafts, it does not appear any have been revised, which is fine. But there are, I just want to highlight some specific changes for consideration in the policies, and I would encourage the board members to actually read the policies and the changes and consider how they might impact the division, because it's hard to get that nuance in a PowerPoint. For example, the policy on student advancement, we added language to families. That's because we removed references to parents and converted it to families, so we may want to think about the impact of that. The new, the media center and how materials are chosen, that's a new procedure at six pages. That's a lot, so we may want to read it and think about how a family, if they had questions or concerns, if they could walk through the steps. And then lastly, and this is just a couple of examples, not to go into too much detail and extend the meeting too much, but the policy on religion, it was, it's been in place since 94 and has been working pretty well. But for example, you know, current policy of school concerts that include a variety of selections may include religious or seasonal music. That's sort of student-driven, and they can choose it. You know, added religious or seasonal themed music in school division performances is allowed if there is a curricular purpose and taught in a factual, objective, and respectful manner. That may actually be curtailing some of the student freedom of adding it to the student performances. So I think it's important that we read and really consider some of these changes before we vote, when they come up for vote.
Thank you, Ms. Amon. So to Dr. Parker, what is the timeline for recommendation on voting on these policies? Is it at our July meeting?
It's at the pleasure of the board. Mr. Chairman, you can vote on those on July 1, or you could extend to August at your first official meeting of the year. If there's still work that Mrs. Brooks and the policy committee needs to move forward to make any further adjustments, that could be extended to the August meeting. It was the will of this board to make sure that you had policy chapters reviewed on a certain set schedule, but there's no schedule for you approving those policy, those policy changes. It's just a matter of making sure that we, as Mrs. Amon recommends, get the best policy on the books as possible.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Amon. So we will encourage board members, please contact the superintendent with your questions and comments and concerns. We'll work through the process, and we will confer with the superintendent on scheduling a vote on these policies. Thank you, Ms. Brooks.
Thank you, and I'd like to thank, of course, Dr. Best and Mrs. Amon for working with us this year. Our last meeting was fairly extensive, and they hung in there with us for two and a half hours, and we really appreciate your work and all of the, your expertise in helping us to advance the policies to the board. Thank you.
All right. The next item is 5.02, student fees. All right, the next item is five point oh two, student fees.
And Dr. Jones will present the proposed student fees for the 2022-2023 school year.
Good evening, Chair Brown, Vice Chair Searls Law, board members, and Dr. Parker. The purpose of this presentation is to share the student fee list for the 2223 school year as a part of board policy to inform the board and public of instructional fees associated with particular courses and programs. Upon school board approval, the entire student schedule will be posted on the Newport News Public Schools website and in the Rights and Responsibilities handbook. When developing the student fee list, alignment to the Newport News Public Schools Strategic Plan Journey 2025 is highly considered. The strategic goals that are associated with instructional student fees are student success, enhanced partnerships, and stewardship of resources. The student fee process engages many stakeholders and include the following: collection of fee requests from schools and departments, collaboration with departments of school leadership, curriculum and development, and finance, sharing with principals and supervisors for input, and revising and publishing the fee schedule on the Newport News website and again in the Rights and Responsibilities handbook. Student fees are provided for each student in synergy. Parents and students can log in to review fees before school begins. Most fees are generally collected at the beginning of the school year or through the online student fund site. However, there is a four percent service charge for using the student fund site. Equitable practices are integrated in our daily operations. Therefore, no student is ever denied resources or participation due to the inability to pay. Additionally, payment plan options are available for families who need assistance. Middle school fees are associated with elective or related arts courses. In visual and performing arts, courses such as art, theater, chorus, band, and orchestra fees are based on semester or year-long courses. The fees are used for hands-on digital resources and music apps that students can use at home and at school. It is the recommendation of our senior leadership team to waive all band instrument fees again for the 2223 school year to support the needs of our students and families. Band, chord, choral, and orchestra uniform fees vary by school and by performances. High school fees are very similar to middle school fees with a slight difference in art. It is also the recommendation of our senior leadership team to waive all band instrument rental fees again for the 2223 school year for our high school students and families. As with middle school, band, choral, and orchestra uniform fees vary by school and performances. Most fees in career and technical education and ISTEM are for online resources, hands-on labs, robotics kits, and/or consumable resources. Technology fees, this is an area that we really want to grow on this school year. Students are not charged any upfront technology fees for devices, insurance, and or use of internet hotspots. Technology fees are only charged, charged for loss or damage to equipment. For example, a protective case will cost ten dollars if students are to lose or damage the protected district issued case. Also, the AC adapter or power cord will cost the student twenty dollars if they lose it. This is often an item that is lost by students. Students are required to use the official manufacturer's power cord or charger. Use of a third-party or generic power adapter can cause possible damage or harm. Other fees include LCD screens and keyboards. Lost or stolen devices, students may be charged up to one hundred and twenty-five dollars. If stolen, a police report must be filed to document the theft. Replacement fees will be waived if a copy of the police report is provided to the school. Lost devices will be disabled and can be re-enabled if found in good condition. The replacement fee for a lost Chromebook is prorated based on the age of the device. In the cases of negligence or intentional damage, an administrator will investigate and conference with the student and family. Willful, malicious, or intentional damages may result in the full cost of the repair or replacement up to two hundred and fifty dollars. Other student fees include costs for driver's ed behind the wheel. In health and PE, students may use locks at no charge. However, if the lock is lost, there is a five-dollar fee. Sports medicine fees remain at fifteen dollars per year for individual hands-on kits and supplies. The cost for lost or damaged textbooks, library books, and supplies such as calculators are prorated based on the age of the product. Student tuition fees for students who are out of the Newport News Public Schools, school division, and or state are established by policies JFAB and DFG, which prescribe that the tuition rate is based on the operating revenue from city funds and sales tax divided by the projected ADM. There was a slight increase in tuition for out-of-division and non-residents for the 2223 school year. During this past school year, nine students paid out-of-division tuition. Waivers are provided to students of staff of Newport News Public Schools employees. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Ely.
What the fees that are associated, do we have a, a set of funds set aside if a child can't afford any band or uniform fees that the school division can help them out to make sure that kids have what they need?
Yes, students, if they can afford something, they go see their school principal, and the school administration is prepared to deal with any student who cannot afford to pay.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Yes, Ms. Best?
It's regarding driver's ed. Does that apply to driver's ed as well, behind the wheel?
Yes, I'm sure the administration will be more than happy to work something out with that student, even if it's on a payment plan.
Thank you.
Ask a question just in regards to parking fees. We still, we're still collecting parking fees?
Yes, it's thirty-five to fifty dollars, depending on the school.
Dr. Jones, I made sure I understood that parking fees are not an instructional fee. But I told her to make sure she has that answer for the board tonight, just in case it's asked.
Because he knew I was gonna, he knew I was gonna ask it. And I, I ask that just because in, in relation to fees in general, I see a concern in the, in the community that a lot of students, a lot of children of this generation don't drive at all. And fees oftentimes, they, they don't prohibit, but they inhibit behavior. And so seeing a lot of young people who just don't elect to drive at all, it's actually the reverse of trying to get them to drive as opposed to, when I was growing up, the getting, getting a driver's license was a really big deal. And now it's, and now it's not. So I bring that up because of the concern of the collection of fees, and it's an inhibition of students engaging in activities. And I just wonder, is there a way for, because I'm using art or band as an example, can I start the activity first and then owe the fee? So in other words, in other words, because if the fee is upfront, then I, then I may just say, well, forget it, I'm not even gonna try.
No, students are not denied the opportunity, and they're billed for it. So they'll have an opportunity to work that out with their school administration.
Yes, Dr. Best?
Regarding the fees for technology, I think I know the answer. A child, let's say, if they do lose or damage their Chromebook, and, and they're billed for it, but if they have not paid it, they are given another one to continue with instruction as needed, correct?
They are given another one, but they do still have that bill, and principals are to counsel with that student and that family in order to rec, to recruit those funds from the lost or damaged device, especially if it was intentional.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to five point oh three, the attendance report. Five point oh four, the membership report. Five point oh five, construction report. Board members, you will receive copies of these reports in your packets. Are there any questions at this time? Hearing none, then we'll move on to item five point oh six, comments by the superintendent, Dr. Parker.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Earlier today, we hosted the Summer Leadership Institute for our advanced leadership teams. That posed to principal, principal central office staff and support staff. Dr. Lavelle Brown, the superintendent of Ithaca City School District in New York and author of Culture of Love, was our keynote speaker. He was phenomenal, and I think, believe our staff enjoyed him. We also heard from some of our students during a panel discussion with youth, that was promoted by Youth Development, and members of the Equity Assessment and Strategic Operations Teams led us in a lunch and learn. During the afternoon, attendees participated in two, in two leadership learning sessions led by some highly regarded local and state educators. We'd also like to thank the Department of School Leadership for another successful professional development opportunity. The Leadership, Summer Leadership Institute has become our traditional Leadership Institute in June as we wrap up the school year. Last week, we wrapped up another successful school year, and I'd like to take this moment, a few moments, to thank our teachers, school and division support personnel, and operations personnel, including bus drivers, cafeteria, and maintenance for their efforts this year. Thank you for ensuring our students arrive at school safely, have nutritious meals, access to technology, a strong curriculum, and clean and safe places in our schools to learn and work. Your actions truly made a difference for our students and families this year. The results of your efforts were on display earlier this month as one thousand five hundred and fifty students walked across the stage and received their well-deserved diploma in front of thousands of guests. It was a proud time for all of us, and I'd like to take a few moments to share some information regarding the class of 2022. This year's graduating class earned over fifty-five million dollars in scholarship offers and academic awards. The class of 2022 was accepted into one hundred and twenty colleges, universities, and military institutions, and forty-five percent of the graduating class received a grade point average of three point oh or higher. And finally, the class of 2022 earned over two thousand industry and career certifications. We have a member of the class 2022 with us, and I'd like to say congratulations to this class for laying the tracks and doing the hard work to be ready for whatever comes in their future. And we do live in a complex world today. But we believe that the class of 2022 will make us all proud. So on behalf of myself, my staff, congratulations to the class of 2022. On Thursday, June twenty-third, twenty-three, third, Newport News Public Schools, in partnership with the Education Foundation, are hosting the inaugural golf classic at Killen Creek Golf Club to benefit the Education Foundation's programs, including student recognitions, teacher mini-grants, and the LETS Scholarship. The shotgun start will begin at nine AM. There are still a few slots available, so more information is available on the website if anyone is interested in participating in the golf tournament. We also want to thank the Education Foundation for a great annual salute to success banquet, which was held three weeks ago. This was a great display of college career and citizen readiness. The event recognized eighty-seven high achieving high school students who earned four more industry certifications, and also many of our student leaders. We'd also like to congratulate the Heritage Girls Track Team for winning another state championship, the spring championship. The girls' outdoor track was named the Virginia High School League Group Four State Champions. And I know we are working with the school to try to find ways to recognize those ladies, but they are, time is fleeting, and they are, and they are a very fast team. So we'll try to see if we can get some recognitions or at least buy some gear for those ladies to celebrate their championship. And finally, I wish all staff a well-deserved summer break. For those who will be joining us for Summer Spark, we thank you. Your efforts will ensure that our students continue to receive a quality educational experience this summer. And, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my remarks for this evening.
All right, thank you, Dr. Parker. We'll move on to item six, which is another opportunity to hear from the public. Madam Clerk, do we have any cards at this time? All right, there being no cards, we will then move on to matters by the school board. And we will begin with our esteemed student representative, Maya Patterson. Please take us out.
Of course, just a few quick words. Once again, I'm thankful for the opportunity to have served on the school board as student representative. I think it's a very important role to have a student voice on the board as well. First year back, went in person one hundred percent fully. Still going through the pandemic as well, but it's been, it's definitely been a year in experience. And I also enjoy working on stage as well, hearing from other students who have input on how to better the community and school system as well. And also, congratulations to the next and upcoming student rep, Ms. Raquel. She's from Menfield High School. And just another thing, I'm the type of person when, when I do, as soon as I complete something, I just think like, oh, man, how could I have been better? Like, I dance, and so every competition I go to, as soon as I get offstage, I'm like, oh, no, I already know what I did wrong, how could I have done better? And my parents always tell me that they raised me to be better than them. And so in the future, I hope to be able to influence someone to raise them better than me. So just a thought to think how, when completing something, just think, how could you have been better? And continue to be able to influence people that they're better than you. So once again, I'm excited to see how the next year comes and how it will be better. And I am thankful for the experience. Again, I can't say how much, but I'm excited to see how it does get better. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Patterson. Continue on down, Dr. Best.
No comments for this evening.
All right, all right, Mr. Harris?
No comments.
Okay, all right. Mr. Ely?
Well, I have comments. I just would like to thank the city for the wonderful Juneteenth parade and for what they've been on over the weekend. It was amazing. This weekend, last weekend, I was able to see a lot of community folks come together and enjoy the Juneteenth celebration. Also, had the opportunity to attend President Harvey, was it forty-four?
Forty-four years.
Forty-four years of serving our great community, the Hampton Grove area. That was well put on. Thanks to our brother Gary Hunter, he did a very job, great job with that. And thank you, Dr. Harvey, for all that you've done for the Hampton Grove area, as well as Down and Gross Culture Arts Center have a new art exhibit. And this art exhibit is kind of different. This exhibit, it focuses on art far as fashion. So it's fashion and hair. The Lawrence Brothers is putting this exhibit together. It's been very respected in the community, a lot of great attendance. So if you got a chance, go down to Down and Gross Culture Arts Center. This new exhibit is about art and art, fashion, and hair. Also, I had the opportunity to attend Antoine Pethia Celebrity Basketball Game and Scholarship Fundraiser at the New Court in Denby. It was amazing, felt so good to see so many kids actually being kids, playing freeze tag, hide and go seek, I said. These are games I played when I was a kid, but I let you know that kids are getting their brain from their cell phones and actually enjoying the outdoors area. So it felt really good to just see Pethia come back to the community and bring basketball tournament and other great things to our city. And the last thing I'd like to say, I'd like to thank all the teachers and staff for all the hard work that you've done this year. We know it wasn't, it wasn't easy that far with masks, no masks, pandemic, no pandemic, pandemic. It was a lot of different challenges, but our teachers and staff, they rose to the challenge to make sure that our students were safe. Dr. Parker, your team, you made sure that y'all put procedures in place, work with the CDC to make sure our staff and teachers and bus stops were safe. So I'd like to thank everyone for a great school year. Enjoy this amazing summer, and stay safe.
Thank you, Mr. Ely. Ms. Amon?
I'll keep it short and sweet. First of all, thank you to Ms. Patterson for joining us this last year. It's been great having you on the, on the school board as our student representative. And we had wonderful graduations a couple of weekends ago. So I just was every, just wish all the graduating seniors or graduated seniors Godspeed, and look forward to seeing the students, juniors and below, that'll be returning to us next year. Remember, it's a little earlier, August twenty-ninth this year, despite my son's protestations. It's gonna be a little early. So enjoy your summer, read a book, and we'll see you next year.
All right, thank you, Ms. Amon. Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Ms. Patterson, it was wonderful having you as part of our team up here, sitting on the board, sitting up here at the DIs. Congratulations on your graduation, and Godspeed to your next endeavor, whatever that may be. And I just want to say thank you to all the graduates. Good job, well done to our teachers and staff, principals, and bus drivers, and cafeteria workers, and professional school counselors, and family engagement specialists. Out to my family. But enjoy, and as Ms. Amon would say, please go out and read a book, magazine, newspaper, or something. Just go out and read, and we look forward to another, and great things are happening here in Newport News Public Schools. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hunter. Madam Vice Chair?
Well, we made it. So this is an exciting thing for our students, for our superintendent, for his leadership team, for this board. We have a lot to get through this year, and we did it. There were bumps and bruises here and there, but we kept going, and we are crossing this finish line. On the other side of this finish line, we need to recuperate, we need to rejoice, rejuvenate, we need to read, and we need to send off, but not say goodbye, to our, our Ms. Patterson. We send you blessings for sure ahead of you as you go off, and we'll see you guys back here soon.
All right. All right, well, by all accounts, this is a, this is a very tough year, and I'll, I'll be the one to say this is probably my toughest year being in on school board, but we got through it, and I think that's the important thing. We got through it, not only did we get through it, but our community is stronger and our division is stronger for the experiences that we did have. We congratulated a graduating class that is second to none. Our graduation rate continues to be, continues to be higher than the state average, and it actually has climbed, climbed yet once again. So through all the challenges and difficulty, we can boast a fantastic graduation rate. Not only that, our dropout rate has continued to decrease. And I, and I said this years, years prior, that getting to two percent was going to be fairly straightforward, but once we started necking down to trying to get under one percent, then it was gonna get harder and harder. But we're, we're very close to getting, I'm gonna see it, hopefully in my time, we get to a less than one percent dropout rate in our division, and we are very close to that. We're, I believe, one point four right now from this year. So a lot of fantastic work has been done. Ms. Patterson, we thank you for being an excellent student rep through all of this, this time and these, in these challenges. You've represented the student voice very well to the board. We appreciate having you as a resource. You're always, I tell all the student reps this, you're always invited to come back and speak to the board. The board very much wants to hear from you, the stories of your life and your journey, encourage the board and help us to continue on in our journey and the work that we do. So whenever you come to speak, don't worry, they're not gonna put you into item two. We'll get you into, we'll get you into item one during the board recognitions, and, and I always promise that I'll give you unlimited time to speak and say as much as you need to say. We want you to come back next year, tell us about how things are going, tell us what kind of jobs you're working, internships, things of that nature, college, whatever you're up to. I very much, we very much want to hear from you and, and continue to hear from you. And with that, happy graduation. I know we, we serve graduations this, I believe it was this past weekend, it seems like time's gone by so fast. We had our salute to success, we had our support staff of the year banquet, we had, we had our teacher of the year banquet. So we've, we've, we've had quite, we've had quite the June, but it's not over yet. We're getting ready for August. We're gonna have our retirement celebration, I believe, and then as well, we got summer graduation coming up. So all of you students out there right now, it is time to really push forward. And you, you're in that final push, the board encourages you. The full board plans to be at your graduation this summer in August.
Yes.
I have that, I have that on good authority. The full board plans to be there. We are very excited and encouraged to see you walk across the stage, shake your hand just like we did in the Hampton Coliseum, and we very much looking forward to seeing you in your, in your beautiful robes, and it'll be a wonderful and momentous occasion. So please continue to study hard and go to summer school, do your best, and we will see you all next year.[1721.91][1721.91]